It is seven o'clock, and I would like to welcome you all to the December 19th DeSoto City Council meeting. We'll start tonight's meeting with roll call, please.
Lainey?
Here.
Honored Michael?
Here.
Ridda?
Here.
Ritter?
And Councilman Daniels is absent.
Okay. Would you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I know, I'm so excited.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, look, I can take up all this room.
Okay, our first item tonight is a public hearing to listen to a petition for the deannexation of property located at 35960 West 95th Street, Northwest Corner 95th and Sunflower Road. Are you going to kick it off?
Oh, yeah, certainly I can. Yeah, so this deannexation action tonight is a result of the process that began associated with rezoning the property at the Northwest Corner of Sunflower and 95th. You'll remember when we annexed it, the owner at the time made that annexation contingent on the property being rezoned and that project proceeding forward. As we all know, the property was not rezoned, that was voted down, the project is not proceeding forward, so as a legal obligation, the city is obligated to take this action now and deannex the property from the city limit. So that's what, that's the item on the agenda tonight. It is a public hearing, so we'll allow the public to speak on that, and then it's an action item later on our agenda. The action item is actually, yeah, item 4C on the agenda.
Okay.
So Patrick can correct me if I'm wrong about any of that.
All right. With that, I will officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak regarding the deannexation of property? Okay, hearing none. I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll take this up a little bit later in the meeting. Our next item is our consent agenda tonight. We have approval of our minutes from the December 5th council meeting, approval of pay ordinance number 868, and approve serial malt beverage license annual renewals. Does anyone have a question or something to discuss on the consent agenda? Is not a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Same.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Honored Michael?
Yes.
Lainey? Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Ridda? Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion here.
Okay, our next item is call to public. Members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business not listed on tonight's agenda. The comments that are discussed under call to public may or may not be acted on by the council at this meeting. There's a four-minute time limit. Does anyone wish to address the council tonight? Please step up, Charles.
Charles Lawhand, 31760 West Eddie III Street, DeSoto, Kansas, and I'm coming tonight referencing the sidewalk to nowhere that is running in front of our property. They're in front of what was used to be the vegetable market. The compaction on that drive was 50 years old. After the sidewalk went in, my daughter was backing out, and her car fell into the axle. We had to get Dale Service to come down and pull her out. That's not the way they found it. I don't think that's the way they should leave it. So my concern is, what is the remedy for this? And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Charles. Mike, you want to?
Well, certainly. Project's not done. We'll certainly restore the area to its previous condition or better. We're sorry for the inconvenience during construction. Wintertime construction is never easy, but...
They haven't worked on it in several weeks, and we've had some beautiful weather for this time of year.
Yeah, again, it's not complete. We'll make it right before we leave, and again, apologize for the mess.
Please step up and state your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Bill, and I mentioned something about sidewalks.
Do you want to give the clerk your address for our records?
First name is Phil, and your last name?
Rhodes.
Pardon me?
Rhodes.
R-H-O-D-E-S.
It's R-H-O-A-D-S.
All right, sir. And your address, please.
It's 968 Lexington Avenue.
968.
102A, Lexington Avenue. Prospect Point. And I walk my dogs in...
All right, now, I'm sorry. Would you mind going back to the mic, so then everybody can hear you? I'm sorry.
I do walk my dogs in morning time, when it's dark, and when I walk the dog at nighttime, when it's dark. I have an orange vest. I hear people, state troopers telling, if you see somebody walking, get over. I've noticed the police department don't get over. I see, notice the school buses don't get over, and half the cars go by you doing 45 or 50 miles an hour, like tonight. Almost got hit with an orange vest on. Instead of putting sidewalks in different areas, y'all need to put sidewalks over streetlights. There. From K10 all the way down on past Prospect Point up the hill. That's all I got to say.
All right, I've noticed, noted a sidewalk and a streetlight issue along Lexington toward Prospect Point. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Old business, we have none, so we'll go to new business. Item A, consider bids for installation of conduit for streetlights on 91st Street.
Yes, Council, this will be essentially the wrap-up, well, one of the wrap-up items for the new 91st Street. We did have in the street designs, boulevard-type street lighting improvements included with that, and as you probably know, none of the streetlights in the city are actually owned by the city. They're all owned by Evergy. And so there's a coordination with Evergy to get that system in place, and what that coordination entails is the city designing, so our consultant designed the system to be in place, the number of poles, the placement of poles, and we're also responsible for placing conduit up to the pole locations as well. And then from then, Evergy comes in and installs the pole and pulls the wire. So on the agenda item tonight is for the installation of the conduit itself. We just recently took bids here, got three of them. The low bid was from Sheets Construction for $19,056.25. Sheets is a contractor we have done work with in the past. They put some waterline in around the downtown area for us several years ago. They're a good contractor. Funding for this will come out of the capital improvements line item for 91st Street, so we're asking for your approval to accept the low bid and authorize the funding.
Questions for Mike? Not a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the bid from Sheets Construction in an amount not to exceed $19,056.25.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lainey?
Yes.
Honored Michael?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Ridda?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion here.
Okay, I see our next item, final plat for Berman subdivision is tabled. Do we need a motion to table that?
Yeah, could we please table till January 2nd?
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Second, sorry.
Aye.
Closed, all right. Item C, consider ordinance deannexing property at 35960 West 95th Street.
Yes, Council, Mike may have already informed you before I came into the meeting, but the annexation of this property, the consent that was received by the owners was conditioned on a rezoning being successful, rezoning the property, and that rezoning was not successful. The planning commission and then the city council denied that rezoning. So based on the consent being conditioned on the rezoning being successful, any annexations or deannexations have to be done pursuant to a particular statute, and to deannex a property, it requires a public hearing and requires certain findings to be made by the city council, and I've reflected those in the ordinance. So, and essentially, it's just that there's no public inconvenience, and justice to the property owners will be served by granting the deannexation. So that's the purpose of this.
Questions for Patrick? What's the ordinance number, ma'am?
2483.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2483, granting petition to deannex property within the corporate boundaries of the city of DeSoto.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lainey? Yes.
Honored Michael?
Yes.
Ridda?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion here.
Okay, our next item, I'm assuming is ancillary to redefine the city boundary?
Yes, this is, Council, this is something that we do every year if there has been annexations or deannexations in the calendar year. So Mike has provided the boundary, and so the resolution, you're just indicating that that's the boundary of the city, and it does include the deannexation that you just acted upon.
Okay.
Yeah, so the only difference then from last year would be the part, the two parcels at the southwest corner of 95th and Hill Creek that were annexed. So that legal description, believe it or not, defines the shaded area that's on the screen now. It's on my list to get a new kind of cleaned-up meets and bounds description of the boundary. That one, Kevin, you're a land surveyor, aren't you?
Yeah, I was just going to ask. Is it right? I do, I am licensed.
I firmly believe it's correct.
You firmly believe it to be correct?
Firmly believe.
Okay.
Yes.
Other questions other than the question Kevin just asked?
I'll make a motion, then we approve resolution 1023 declaring the boundaries of the city of DeSoto, Johnson County, Kansas.
And I will second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lainey?
Yes.
Ritter?
Yes.
Honored Michael?
Yes.
Ridda? Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Motion here.
Okay, our next item is item E, consider or authorize the mayor to approve city hall facility use agreements. Mike?
I'll give this to Patrick.
Yeah, just explain this in the memo in the packet, but I think based on an effort with Jay and Brad and Mike, there was a desire to sort of get a handle on the users of the city hall facilities, and part of doing that, these agreements that I put together are all standardized, so they're essentially the same agreement. There are some particulars, as you know, some of them are paying rent. The ones that are, they're sort of a permanent presence, they have some insurance requirements, so unless you have questions, as indicated in the memo, I just ask that you authorize the mayor to enter into all of the attached agreements. There are some minor revisions, for example, Sarah told me that her title has changed, so that's, I've changed that on that agreement, so, but anything significant or substantive, we would come back to the council, but otherwise, any revisions would just be minor typo-type things.
Okay. Questions from council? This is, we talked about that, we, what, a couple months ago?
Yeah, it was part of the facility master plan. Uh huh. Yeah, and this'll, like Patrick said, kind of standardize all those agreements.
And all of these are set to commence on January 1, 2020.
I'll make a motion, then, to authorize the mayor to enter into the attached agreements and authorize staff to make any non-substantive revisions requested by the users.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Lainey? Yes.
Honored Michael?
Yes.
Ridda? Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion here.
Okay. Our next item, item F, consider approval of construction phase services for Riverfest bathrooms. Steve?
Good evening. Mayor and council, I'm going to discuss a little bit tonight, one of my pet projects, and Laurie's too. In June, you entered into a design-build agreement with KBS contractors, and that was the Phase 1, which was the painful division of water resources permit and the engineering for the Riverfest toilet project. We have completed Phase 1. It actually came in about $1,200 under what KBS had estimated it at. What we have before you tonight is the design-build construction phase of the toilet. We worked over the last several months getting the design together, worked with Jay on this, and they've got a guaranteed maximum price of $166,377 to complete the toilet. That does not include the utilities, which will be the city's responsibility, and we're going to do those in-house, and it'll be about $14,000 to do that. In that $14,000, there's also the locks. It's a timed lock system for the doors. It didn't get in the bid, and we'll have that in the city portion. We have construction plans for it. They took the bids, they put it out for bid. We have one of our local contractors who's, was a successful bidder on the electrical part of it. So at this point, we'd like to recommend that the council approve $166,377 for the design-build with KBS, and an estimated cost of around $14,000 for the utilities. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have also.
Is this in line with where we originally thought we were going to be budget-wise?
Absolutely. We were at $198,475, and we came in about $9,400 over that, 4.75%, and that's significantly due to the permitting and engineering of the resulting...
$5,000 we spent on the permitting up front? You mean, six, right? Okay.
That's also the reason it's four months behind.
Exactly. We do have the DWR permit in hand, as Rick knows. They brought it in the other day, so we have the permit for it. It was painful, but we have it.
Yeah, and the way the design-build contract was set up was that we authorized Phase 1, and then, you know, this additional authorization step is required for Phase 2, if you find it acceptable.
We're looking at about a 60-day construction. It's just with the weather right now, I don't want to make any guarantees.
Yeah.
We'll do the best we can to have it in before our summer activities for Riverfest, though.
Okay. If you, so if, when you make a motion, if you could include my review, I'm recalling when we negotiated this with KBS, Dave Anderson, there were a few items we had noted that we would need to add or change for the construction part of it, insurance, so that's just something I'd like to be able to make sure we're taking care of. And Dave was aware of that at the time we did the first part of it, so that shouldn't be any issue, but I'd just like to have that opportunity to do that.
Okay, questions from council?
Yeah, it's just a little bit of a nit, but Exhibit C's referenced, and it lists $166,475 as opposed to the $166,377, just for consistency. Was there a reason that's different?
Well, that was my...
Exhibit C.
I had $166,475, and I didn't, when Mike did this, he had $377.
So Mike has it wrong.
You know where that came from, because it's not my number.
Well, the $377 comes from right here in their letter.
Yeah, that's in the letter.
$166,377.
Okay.
That looks like the number, right?
I believe that's the number. Exhibit C, yeah.
I took it off the original estimate, I think, so it'll be $377.
Okay, just so the record reflects the inconsistency.
What's the dollar amount?
It's $1...
$377.
$166,377.
$377, and $14,000 for the city portion.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just trying to get the difference in my head.
A hundred bucks, a hundred bucks, almost.
I want an exact amount. I've got to up this up now.
And then Patrick, on those items you're talking about, are those itemized anywhere to be able to be, to include them in a motion?
You just want it per city attorney review, is that what you're asking?
Right, and they had to do with the original contract.
Okay, so just to be sure that it incorporates...
Right.
...city attorney comments discussed with the contractor.
Review, and yeah, if there's, again, if there's anything significant, we'll let you know, but...
What's the outside landscaping around it like? Is it just, is that just like concrete?
There'll be a concrete apron and ADA ramp going up to it. There is no landscaping with it.
Anything else outside, just a ramp?
No.
I was trying to figure out where it was, and there's not really, so to get to it, you're coming from that sidewalk out in the parking lot, basically.
Well, you can get to it off the grass area, inside the boulders, too.
Okay, okay. But there's not a path or anything at this point in time from there?
No.
The paths are all from the outset.
But the ADA access is off the end of the...
That's correct.
Yeah, because that's the front, will face the parking...
It'll face the south.
South.
Okay.
And the time locks, they're set for what, what?
We'll have to determine that, and there, we're hoping if the internet access Wi-Fi is down there, that we can use a little different system, which we can actually access off of our mobile phones and computers. So it just depends, we get a little closer, if we have the ability to put that system in, we will, it's just kind of up in the air right now.
Then you can incorporate one of those security cameras.
You're right.
Have the doors unlocked when the tornado sirens go off.
Yeah, we could do that.
It could serve as a place of refuge.
I wonder if that's an approved shelter. All right, any other questions, if not a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve spending $180,577 to complete the Riverfest toilet project upon approval of the city attorney of the contract with the contractor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ritter?
Yes.
Honored Michael?
Yes.
Lainey?
Yes.
Ridda? Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion here.
Okay. Our next item is executive session. We do have an item to discuss tonight under land acquisition. Laurie, would you like to make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to recess into executive session at 7:25 for 15 minutes to discuss acquiring land for a sports complex pursuant to statutory basis. Land acquisitors in KSA 754319B6, with the open meeting, can resume in the city council chamber at 7:40.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, okay. We'll be back. Pose, okay. We'll be back. Pose, okay. We'll be back.
Okay, I'll remind you that your mics are off unless you turn them on.
All right, mine's back on. Advisory reports. Do we need any action on anything?
We need to, we don't need a motion to come back in. I can never.
I just called us back in.
That's legal. No, Patrick, correct me unless, if I'm wrong, but everything's.
Yeah, no, you don't.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay.
So advisory.
Advisory reports.
Yeah. I used to have a couple things. We, I'm gonna be out all next week. And packets for the January second meeting typically would go out on Friday, and we're gonna try and get as much of them compiled and done and out tomorrow as we can. So you'll be getting some packet information for that January second meeting that might be supplemented next week, so.
Okay.
Just keep an eye out for that.
You'll still send the information out on the web?
Same way. Yep, same way. That was it, that's it for me.
You said you had two things.
I'm sorry, that was both things.
Okay. Patrick?
Just wanted to let the council know, I'm going to participate in the January second meeting by phone. Taking the family to New York City for a few days after Christmas, so.
I don't think I'll be here either. I think I'll be calling to New York City as a nanny.
I'll try not to call from a bar.
Times Square. Or Rockefeller Center.
Yeah.
Okay, that it?
That's it.
All right. Lana?
On behalf of all of our employees, would just like to say thank you to the mayor and his wife for the very delicious holiday lunch that you provided to us.
Absolutely.
Well, that was my pleasure.
That was the best barbecue I've ever had. Absolutely.
All right. Let me poke my head down a little bit here.
It's not in the clouds, my goodness.
That's anybody who had any. Kevin, you were, yeah. It was awesome.
Council comments. Maybe I'll start to, were, were you done Lana? Sorry.
Yes, I am.
All right, I have a couple things. First of all, it's time to reappoint a fire board member, and I would like to recommend we reappoint Doug Bedford to the fire board. If you're so inclined to agree with me, we have a resolution, and it is resolution number one zero two five that would reappoint Doug to the fire board for another term.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Comments, if not, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Okay. Let's see, I have another item. Park board, we've been collecting applications, I have four of them, and I'm gonna be, over the next couple weeks, conducting either in face or phone interviews with each of the candidates, and then either at the last meeting in January, probably the first meeting in February, I will bring a recommendation for a replacement to fill the vacant seat we currently have on the park board, but we got some good candidates that applied. We need to now encourage people to apply for a board of zoning appeals position, right?
There's two.
There are two openings, so. You have anybody that think might be interested in serving on BZA for, what, two or three meetings a year?
Yeah, it's worked out for about one meeting a year.
One meeting a year.
Last ten.
Okay.
It's not a very demanding.
That is out there. And my last item is, this morning I was invited to Topeka to meet with the governor to talk about the border war. And I don't know if you've been following the news, but there's been, you know, we had the the governor's executive order, the governors of both states, their executive order that essentially eliminated the border war at the state level, but Kansas City, Missouri had promised to drop their tax abatements to a ten-year term to match what's possible in Kansas. Currently, on Missouri, they can go to twenty-five years from the local on tax abatements, and then the Port Authority, which I did know till this morning, can go to thirty-five years for projects within the Port Authority on the Missouri side, so. Casey Mo was supposed to have considered that ordinance this afternoon. It had been stalled in committee since August, and that was probably some of the angst, you know, the Watt Ellen Reed thing was stirred some of that up again, but it was, it was the exception that was already in the pipeline, so it shouldn't have been, but then all the local money came in and it got people wondering again. Plus the delay in the approval of the Casey Mo ordinance and their pushback and concern about